Members, let's get started. This session is about the estimates for the creative industries. I would invite the secretary, Mr. Edward Yao, to speak. Members who intend to speak, please press the request to speak button. Mr. Yao, please. Thank you. Chairman, as I have said in the last session, please remain silent while Mr. Yao speaks. Mr. Yao, please. Thank you. Chairman, as I have said in the last session, Hong Kong's economy is facing unprecedented challenges and considerable challenges in view of the global epidemic situation. In sectors such as external trade and tourism, I have covered them in the previous session. So in this session, I like to focus on our work in telecommunications and broadcasting, creative industries, etc. Despite the epidemic, some of our work was able to proceed as scheduled. In terms of telecommunications, we have formally entered the 5G era as scheduled in April. Last year, we distributed, we assigned the 5G spectra and such different commercial operators are able to provide services. Meanwhile, in the next few years, network operators would invest billions of dollars to develop 5G infrastructure, providing coverage across Hong Kong. And with the laying of 5G infrastructure, it would also facilitate the development of Internet of Things as well as smart Internet. Given the current epidemic, there are a number of applications that could be enabled by 5G. For example, video conferencing and distance learning. And with the 5G services, we hope to do more in communications as smart city development. As for broadcasting, we will implement full digital TV broadcast on the first of December this year as scheduled. This would replace analog TV broadcasts. Spectra would be located for the future expansion of 5G use. Meanwhile, we would take care of the disadvantaged groups and the elderly, and we would help them transition from analog TV to digital TV. And we have engaged the Hong Kong Council of Social Service to launch a community care fund, digital TV assistance program to assist needy analog TV households. As at the 31st of March, we have received 7,000 voluntary applications and installed digital TV sets or set-top boxes for 4,300 households for the creative industries. They would certainly be affected by the epidemic. But apart from financial support, we have made use of two funds, including the Film Development Fund and the Create Smart Initiative, to inject $1 billion respectively. And we have started work on these fronts. In respect of the CSI, we have committed more than $300 million for various creative projects. For the FDF, the $1 billion would be injected across the four major measures. First of all, 10 to 12 films would be produced in the coming year with a subsidy amount of up to $9 million per film. And the second measure, the implemented enhanced measures under the Film Production Financing Scheme, and another 10 million set aside for the script-writing evaluation program as well as professional training courses to groom film specialists. In the coming year, in light of the anticipated quiet seasons, we hope these would provide support. Our review of the telecommunications, Broadcasting and Telecommunications Legislative Amendment Bill has been completed and the examination has been completed. We hope to resume second reading debate as soon as possible with a view to implementing the relaxation measures as soon as possible. And I understand there would be a lot of interest in one of the departments under my ambit, that is the RTHK, and members intend to ask questions, as I understand. I'd like to share my views over RTHK. First of all, the RTHK embraces two roles. It is a government department as well as a public broadcaster connected according to the ordinance. Whether as a government department or public broadcaster, it is obliged to respect and uphold the One Country principle, and there could be no deviation. As for the role and mission of RTHK, these are very clear, and these are established under the RTHK charter, especially Article 4, which explains its public purpose and mission, including the acknowledgement of the self-acknowledgement and civil responsibility of the public. These are the functions and missions of the RTHK. Furthermore, the RTHK enjoys a high degree of editorial independence, but it is nonetheless subject to certain checks and balances. In terms of policy, it is subject to oversight by the CDB, and it is also subject to comments by the Advisory Committee as appointed by the Chief Executive, and it would also be subject to regulations by the Communications Authority. Since the RTHK enjoys editorial independence, the Director of Broadcasting is the editor-in-chief, and he holds the final editorial responsibility over the RTHK's programs. I anticipate a number of questions from members, so I would like to hereby explain the government stance, and I'm happy to take questions. More than 20 members are waiting to speak. In order to allow more speaking opportunities, each would only have three minutes. I would read out the names of the first 16 members. Ms. Eddie Chu, Ms. Alvin Young, Mr. Roy Kwong, Dr. Helena Wong, Ms. Yip Kin Yuen, Mr. Chan Pan, Mr. Ted Hui, Mr. Ken Lau, Ms. Ray Chen, Mr. Wong Ting Kwong, Mr. Leung Chi Chang, Ms. Oden Chow, Dr. Fernando Chang, Dr. Kua Kaki, Mr. Fu Siu Ping, and Ms. Claudia Mo. First, Mr. Eddie Chu. Mr. Eddie Chu. Thank you. I do not have expectations of Mr. Edward Yao. So my question is for the Director of Broadcasting, Ms. Leng. On the interview in the program, the Pulse of and a WHO expert, the RTHK issued a press release saying that the program had no specific stance and that the program did not breach the One Country principles as alleged by Mr. Yao. I'd like Mr. Leng to tell us whether the RTHK will continue to side with the reporter of the Pulse. As for departmental expenses, I asked a question of the Secretary for the Civil Service this morning. Last year, the two government departments with the most overtime hours worked included the Hong Kong Police Force as well as RTHK. With the spate of social incidents, we needed more reporters and news practitioners to produce news programs. With the budget of the new financial year, the manpower provision increase of the police was some 7%, while for the RTHK, the establishment only grew by six staff members. In terms of the general departmental expenses, the increase at the Hong Kong Police Force is 117%, while for the RTHK, the general departmental expenses dropped from $490 million to $460 million. Was the reduction in the RTHK's departmental expenses initiated by the RTHK? Or has their budget been slashed by the senior officials? Ms. Leng, you have 30 seconds.
First, on the TV program, RTHK, when it comes to the One China Principle, that is unviolatable. The RTHK have been upholding the One Country, Two System principle. On the department expenses, please continue. Director, are you supporting the Pulse reporter? Please let Mr. Leng reply. On the department expenses, when it comes to overtime work, the RTHK usually take time off in lieu, and for other expenses, it depends on actual need. And the RTHK does not cut the own estimates. It really based on the actual requirements. Next, Mr. Alvin Young. The WHO membership come in different types, including that of observer. Taung was once an observer. When the reporter asked the Deputy Director General of the WHO on the membership, the other side don't know how to respond. For example, Taung was once an observer. Why would the secretary see that question as a breach of the One Country, Two System principle? Policy. Also, media attention and the public attention on the Pulse, I have already issued a statement on this. In my statement, I had made it clear that not of this particular occasion and back in February and March, the RTHK must comply with the charter to fulfill their prescribed duties. And for the particular program, that the overexpression of the program appeared that it had breached the One China policy. So you asked the secretary, since you're in charge. So how would the question be phrased to, should be of liking, and they'll make you clap? Does that mean that you should just drop the question? Or should they can, like you take a look at questions every time before they asked? The CEDB would not interfere in the RTHK productions. Like the Director of Broadcasting said, the RTHK must uphold the One China policy, whether as a public broadcaster or a government department, which should do so according to the charter. How do they fulfill this role? That the director as the editor-in-chief can decide. However, would take an overview of this or not going to weigh in how to produce the programs? If these programs, in terms of the overall expression, have breached it or affect of this important One China principle, which I must point out. I'm talking about that there are different membership layers and WHO would observe being one of them. And 2009 and 2016 was once a WHO observer. So the question is whether could be also include that whether it could reconsider to admit as an observer. How would that breaching the One China policy? We would see that the overall before expression of this show. So you're talking about a matter of perception, which is a major issue. So the RTHK as a government department, as a public body, would have certain requirements, especially on major principles on the Pulse program on the 18th of March. And on another program, there were some contents that were involved with similar situation that must be addressed. I believe that on the another program called Taiwan Stories, when we spot a media inquiries, they also made sure their own response and also apologized profusely. So the, we not only just about one program or one shop, but rather how the program itself, whether as a public broadcaster or the government, they are important parameters to uphold. Even though that I'll try to give a number of to members, however, it should be related to this relevant subject matter. Well, today, Mr. Yao's ambition is plain for everyone in Hong Kong to see. The very articulate Mr. Yao would then even close to oppressing the reporter or even bullying RTHK. Well, the reporter was guilty of asking question because he was too spot on and right got cut off. How that violate the One China policy? Well, you failed to get to the focus of the problem, and you came to other programs, meaning this and that. There's a misjudgment. Would you apologize to the reporter? Secretary, the narrative of Mr. Kwong is different from my position on the matter. In my open statement, while replied to Mr. Yao, I reiterated once again. The CDB is of the view that the expression representation in show had violated One China principle and also violated goals and missions as stated in the RTHK charter. I hope that the Mr. Kwong would project it to other matters I didn't mention. And now he'll be badly wounded. Well, because it's quite embarrassing, oh, you could now bullying RTHK reporter out of the blue. You ask, and everything, what we see, it's just asking question. It's a reporter's duty to ask question. So the question being too spot on, you claim is a breaching the One China policy. That's quite baffling. So true happiness in the question, you felt important. What's the fault of the reporter? You refuse to apologize to reporter, what mistake has she committed? Once again, Mr. Kwong had really took my words on tangent. On this matter, I've stated the CDB and the government's position alike what Mr. Kwong said. Of course, on how to handle this, the RTHK as the production unit of the program, they have their own ways and position. However, I also made my position include RTHK. So if they have their own position and stance, and what it left from you to say anything, you could have stayed silent, since they have their own standard mechanism. But I ought to be accusing a foreign reporter of breaching their One China policy. I don't want to talk to you, Secretary. A question for Mr. Leng. We should put the question towards me. Mr. Leng, so you worked in the media before. If you back down this time, the press freedom is gone. I don't want you to answer. I don't want you to put you in the spot. I used to have much admiration, Mr. Yao. Do you have to resort to such firepower to bully RTHK and the reporter? Time's up, Dr. Helena Wong. Chairman, we know that the the police have a 25% increase in their budget estimates. For RTHK, a CDB, CCI, 070, and the response to Mr. Eddie Chu, in terms of the allocation, from 1.013 billion to around 1.046 billion, a very minor increase. As recalled, the RTHK was supposed to construct a new broadcasting house, and yet the project was torpedoed by poor establishment lawmakers. If RTHK were to develop, the RTHK claims that all law that have allocated sufficient resources for the government to provide public service broadcasting. Is that really sufficient? So have you really swept the whole New Bucket House project under the carpet and then claimed they have sufficient resources? A second question will be on the Pulse reporter. The reporter was merely asking a question. She did not state her personal stance. She was waiting to the WHO answer. So why couldn't she put forward her question? It's a fundamental issue, that whether RTHK as a public broadcaster, the reporters have the right to ask question and to do news gathering. If there are taboo areas and only allow politically correct questions, so not to embarrass the central government or the Hong Kong government. That means that we are castrating our own press freedom and right of news gathering. It's a serious violation of the Basic Law and One Country System. Would you want to see the RTHK turning into another central television? Just something pleasing to presidencies and the central authorities? Do we want to make things that way? The secretary must defend the press freedom and One Country, Two System. And for, and clipping away the reporter asked question, is it violation of Basic Law and One Country, Two System? I'll take the second part of the question. And for first part, I'll like Director Broadcasting check it. First, Hong Kong's enjoy press freedom, thus be enshrined in Article, basically Article 27. And well, a program involve more than just asking question from its design, production to broadcast. This are part of the package. This are what public broadcasters do. And there will have editorial responsibility for the programs they broadcast, which I repeated many times, and please don't confuse the two. And for the resource question, Director of Broadcasting, please. In terms of resources, well, at issue, we decide or farm with a budget based on our need. As for the new broadcasting house project, there's been some progress over the years. A few years ago, well, we thought we might be stand alone. However, in order to achieve cost effectiveness, we might consider have a joint use building. And now we're discussing with this department. As soon as we come to agreement, there is a chance to start the drawing. This site is still available. Next, Ms. Yip Kin Yuen. Just now, Mr. Alvin Young mentioned that the WHO have different membership classes. That is important. The UN have different organizations. One of them will be the UNESCO, of which China is a member, and Macau is also an associate member since 1995. If the reporter asked, shouldn't the Hong Kong become an associate member with UNESCO or for Taiwan? Because there are different membership classes. So does that violate the One China policy? I would like to hear from the secretary on this. In your reply, while reply number 061, they had received over 16,000 compliments. So Secretary, which other department have managed to receive over 70,000 compliments? In this context, we will take pride of the department and will to provide more support in its funding, Secretary. As for the as for the membership of the UN, it's really mostly sovereign states as a unit. So also, the bodies under UN follow the same principles. And sovereign are usually inalienable for all member states. That's an undisputable fact. There are different membership classes in some organizations. However, in the UN, there are mostly sovereign states. And also, they've been agreed upon by all these sovereign states. So that's the first question. Well, it's all a good thing for departments to receive any compliments. But when it comes to criticism, we need to accept and take them on board. The department resources are not really use the compliments or criticism as a yardstick to reduce or increase them. Like the Director of Broadcasting just said, the resource allocation of department is really based on the need and also be in line with the overall allocation policy of the government. I believe the RTHK, in terms of resources, over the past decade, the increases on average actually exceed the average. However, it's really based on the actual need and also take into account the PAC recommendations and the allocation for the company have also taken into account of the views of the PAC. Well, there's too many people waiting. Next, Mr. Chan Han Ben. Well, the basic ethics of the media that each have to quote information accurately, let a lot of public broadcaster emphasis on misrepresentation in blasting other departments have violating the duties of the public broadcaster and even lack the basic ethics of a media. As for the headliner misquoting others in criticizing other government departments, what have you done? In response, or you chose to blindly support your colleagues and let them to slander other departments? And another question on the Pulse reporter question. Well, is it a deliberate ignorance? You know that the pro-Taiwan independence elements have hoping to join the WHO as a sovereign state to demonstrate their statehood. That's a common sense, and yet the reporter had raised it in the interview and setting a trap for the WHO management. If it got him, that there will be news. So the intentions of the reporter was clear. Now said, it appears that the RTHK is cheering for Taiwan independence, and yet the secretary issued a statement, and yet he was criticized by RTHK staff union in claiming that it should not interfere and accuse the secretary of much of the but nothing. May I ask the secretary, do you think that the RTHK is beyond reproach and beyond criticism and even appearing to be out of control? In response to Mr. Chan's second question, I already spelled out the four important principles. The RTHK enjoy editorial independence and also bound by the RTHK charter. And we should abide and also enter an agreement with government and the Communication Authority and see to be, as had to fulfill its missions and goals as public broadcaster. What are successive breaches of the charter? Besides issuing a statement, what else can you do? Or you see that it's out of control? Also need to meet the recommendations by the board advisors and need to deal with any complaints referred by the Community Authority. As a government department, as a bureau chief, we would deal with it as per the same procedures. For example, for any complaints referred by the Communication Authority, if they substantiate it, so we must um, implement it. At the CA suggestion of not uh, do it justice. Uh, now uh, hand over to your first director, Liu.
Director, please be brief. As for the program, the PALS. I reiterate that the one China principle cannot be breached. And the LTHA has always adhered to the principle. As for the question asked by the reporter. Um, if you speculate or extrapolate on the question being asked, I'd like to um, simply say that the WHO issued a very detailed statement which um, address all the um, parts that were not answered at that time. I'd like to ask about reply number zero seven eight about editorial independence. Mister Chan Pan said that the LTHK um were rooting for Taiwan independence, it was a serious allegation. The secretary has been talking about the one country two systems principle in the uh, LTHK charter. I'd like to ask whether that reporter was promoting or rooting for Taiwan independence, either yes or no. Like I said in my statement, my judgment was that um, they breached the one China principle. Or else, well, all right, that is your stance. Would you um, say that they were promoting Taiwan independence? If there's any um, acts that prejudice the completeness of the sovereignty or the one country principle, then that would be an issue. All right. Secretary, would you consider yourself too politically sensitive? The political censorship um has covered the um, a question asked by a reporter. While you talked about the LTHK charter. Well, according to the charter, um, the public should have acknowledgement of their role and one country two systems. Would the program um, jeopardize public acknowledgement of one country two systems or their sense of belonging as a Chinese? Is that the case? If so, that would be a breach, but was that really the case? Mister Yao. First of all, the LTHK is both a government department and public broadcaster, and as such the CDB um, would provide oversight on the LTHK. In this um, incident, as a government department. Um, if the LTHK um committed any breach, then I must some point out some such fault. Apart from the post, um, the situation occurred in other programs and they stirred public discussion. And as such, I'm obliged to explain the issue clearly to both the LTHK and the public. And that is, we must offer a clear explanation to the LTHA and that they could not deviate from such principle. And in the RTHA charter, the editorial independence of the RTHA should not be subject to intervention, and you are taking the lead in breaching the charter. Chairman, I do not agree with this view. Mister Kent Lau. I'd like to ask about CDB CCI zero zero six, a question asked by Mister H Chan. On the funding by the Film Development Fund through the FDF, the government supports the production of films. And the first film, first feature film initiative was launched as well as the Film Production Grant Scheme. Film Production Financing Scheme, etc. But apparently, these were not enough to boost the local film industry. Given the epidemic, investors were reluctant to invest in Hong Kong. Many film practitioners are underemployed. Our neighboring countries have been um, providing a subsidy to production companies, and as such, a lot of investors have flocked to those countries. Hong Kong used to be the Hollywood of the east. Would you support the production of films in Hong Kong? So that um, Hong Kong can return to the um, old glory days? If the government is provided, is um, willing to provide support. We can attract a lots of um film production crews to Hong Kong, and this would also boost our tourism. Would the government consider this possibility or plan? Secretary, thank you very much. I'd like to thank Mister Lau for um, suggesting how we can revitalize the film industry. Attracting overseas investment is certainly a way to go. But we see that a lots of local directors, actors and practitioners are eager to um, receive our support. And that's why through the FDF. We hope to encourage local um, directors to groom new talents and to boost training of talent. If we are able to facilitate more um, film productions and um we can open up collaboration opportunities with the mainland or co- or co-productions. Meanwhile. We would also explore other opportunities under the fund. Since resources are still available, um, this is something we can explore. Mister Ray Chan. Chairman. I wanted to follow up on reply number zero five five about the progress of the new broadcasting house of RTHA. Since the last term of the government and LECO, when Gregory So was secretary, I've been following up on this. But today, um, we shall talk about something else. Um, the director of broadcasting said um, it's um, well underway. Even if you propose some, well, you might not have enough votes at LECO anyway. The government just wants to um, disband the LTHK. A reporter of RTHA asked a question, and she was accused of promoting Taiwan independence. This is extremely um, uh, left wing and you, because of a question asked, you said the RTHA um, breached the one China policy. This is not just about editorial independence, um, it's a breach of the freedom of speech. In the news release, you said the um, it's the views expressed in the program breached the one China principle. The, the, the reporter asked, will the WHO reconsider Taiwan's membership? Was such expression against the one China principle? Um, there was a dialogue between um, Donald, Donald Trump and a female reporter from Phoenix TV. And um, Trump asked who she was working for. Was she working for China? And she said, no, she works in Hong Kong. You can say that, that, that reporter went against the one China principle in the future. If um, someone's um, speech um is against the one China principle against uh, uh, according to the secretary, then um his or her political or freedom of speech would be affected. If you ask whether the participation of um, of Taiwan would um, aid with the epidemic control work? And I could be accused of breaching the one China principle as well. Thank you for the question. I think um, my um, stance was somewhat skewed. In my statement, I focus on LTHK as a government department and public broadcaster. And the principles or very important principles they should adhere to. And I have outlined these four principles in my opening remarks. And this is part of the RTHA's obligation as a government department. The director of broadcasting is my colleague, and he has a role to play. Mister Ray Chan. Um, talked about the um, expression in the program. We were referring to the overall expression of the program rather than a specific question. So that was my focus. And that has been explained. I would also look at the um, treatment in similar programs as a public broadcaster or government department, Mister Wang Ting Kwong, thank you. The RTHA is a government department. The director of broadcasting appointed um, is subject to black carpet treatment. Um, is such acts uh, reck- reckless or illegal, we are talking about a government department. When we look at the um, heads of departments, um how many people would be subject to such treatment? Secretary, what is your view on this? The director of broadcasting, Leng Kai Wing, in his letter to staff of LTHK. He stressed that headliner is not a news program. The program is a satire on current affairs. This is a rare um, genre. And through um, current affairs issues. The program um, seeks to um, provide relief to the audience. So my question for Mister Leng Kai Wing. Is that um, attacks or accusations towards the police or to call them rogue cops? Do you find such um, part of current affairs? For such program genres, um, do you seek to provide relief for the audience or to infuriate people? Director of Broadcasting, Mister Lang. You, you mentioned the so-called um, rogue cops. Our headliner program never use such vocabulary. Headliner is thirty years old. It's not that um, we have um, certain achievements over the thirty years for such um, satirical programs. We um, serve to um, provide um, respect or relief to the audience, different people would have different views towards some such satirical treatment. But in our years producing the program headliner. Our colleagues have explained down the years what our program is really about. Secretary, do you have anything to add? I'd like to thank Mister Wong for the question. Um, there are a lot of different views on RTHA's programs. And I'd like to come back to the four principles I mentioned. As a public broadcaster. Um, the RTHA, the RTHA has a special mission. So how do we um, define whether the RTHA as a public broadcaster meets public expectations? The audience would um watch their programs if they like. But um, the RTHA as a public broadcaster has um, certain public missions and functions. They and they operate on public funds and yet enjoy a high degree of autonomy. So we should resort to the charter of RTHA, that is their mandate and mission. And hopefully, this would be the way we look at it. And um, in terms of cert, in terms of programs, um, they are not um, left unchecked. And if there are complaints at the communications authority, they would be dealt with. And assessments would be made on whether the charter is breached. And um, there would be um, complaints that apply to any broadcaster, Mister Leng Chi Chang.
Or uh, the secretary, that uh, while they are covertly promoting Taiwan independence and breaching the one China policy. While the secretary claims that it has been the director claims that upholding um, the one China policy. Well, the secretary point out you had a problem, and yet you are uh, disputing this. Well. Then you could be accused that um with the loss of uh, editorial independence. Look, well, the LTHK program costs taxpayers over one billion a year and television program six hundred million. Out of this six hundred million, what are your ratings? I want a director to explain, under your leadership. Why we have uh, ratings like one or two points? You, you are an opposite of what we expect. Well, do you think you're a good value for money? I hope you can explain. Now that LECO make lawmakers, some of them, like Dr. Junius Ho. Which uh, her, he, 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 his viewership much higher than you. What are your ratings? So what solution can come which boost your ratings? So the headliner receive uh, complaints like six thousand, and yet you claimed there are thirty thousand compliments. You better explain your work, you are being paid over two hundred thousand dollars a month. And the LTHK TV programs costing six hundred millions of taxpayer money. Thank you, Mister Liu's question. The expenditure of the TV division, well, is six hundred million a year, would include a payroll and production cost. As you can see, uh, the year-on-year growth and the expenditure, and talk about the ratings. Well, uh, our channel were not able to reach uh almost all the household around ninety nine percent, and the second half of the year, we managed to achieve ninety nine percent coverage. That's one of the many factors that affect our viewership. However, uh, we're in the age of multimedia. Provide the conventional TV ratings. Okay, let's cut it directly, so what is, what's the rating for the headliner? What you mentioned were click rates, the headliner. In twenty nineteen January till this February, the click rate of uh, twenty million. And the Hong Kong connection, that's a total figure, thirty six million. Well, that's not uh, comprehensive, which include our YouTube, Facebook and LTHK app's views. As for the uh, other sharing on other platforms. We're not able to get information on that. Next, Mister Holden Chow.
Thank you, Chairman. I see that secretary incorrect in um, pursuing this rigorously. Well, the impact of the PALS was that which the poll, the public actually finished the whole program. That the reporter have used that question to uh, promote Taiwan as a national state. So that's the public impression. If you see that's, that's a strong impression by a public. Now, as a public broadcaster is bound by the charter. You can go take a look. They have a mission to deepen the understanding and promote a national identity. On one hand, you can't claim that you follow the LTHK mission to understand a country. And on the other hand, you are had this uh, subversive activities and promoting Taiwan independence. This doesn't make sense. Uh, if we do so, they only uh, shows that LTHK is schizophrenic. So by pursuing this rigorously, the secretary is right. This is not a matter of just one single question. Well. Well, if the public perception was that someone had seized on this platform to promote pro-taiwan independence. Well, if we don't speak on this time, and someone will uh, pro, po, program to uh, talk about Xinjiang or Tibet independence. Pro program to uh talk about Xinjiang or Tibet independence. To let the further suppression on division of the country. Does that mean the RTHK will become a platform to suffer to um break up the country? I think the government should uh rigorously uphold the LTHK and dealing this matter. Because the LTHK. As some body is bound by a charter within our oversight and turn it into a tool to um to break the country. Well, this might be a wonder, the secretary wonder when can respond. Well, that's what we are doing. Understand that the that you all love the LTHK. However, uh we must point out that mistakes were warranted. I hope that you not only uh see from your own. Uh perspective. And shouldn't confuse the important principles, for example, the freedom of speech. As a government department, as a public broadcaster. And based on the RTHK charter, the government must take a position, which is. Uh the one China policy and the integrity and the. Safety of the country must be respected and upheld. So that applies to all government departments as and all the more for the public broadcaster. Next, Doctor Finan the show. Well, Chairman, so the report asked a question for the WHO. While you reconsider Taiwan's membership and yet you took it on a tangent and. Claim is a breach the one country, two system. Back in two thousand nine to twenty sixteen was a WHO observer. And the virus wouldn't care about national boundary, it wouldn't care about like one country, two country, three country, a thousand countries. Public health is about information transparency and the free flow and allowing all the citizens. To be timely, inform the situation and take preventions. Now that we have at the height of the epidemic, for a reporter to ask a question is perfectly reasonable. In fact, is that Chinese Communist Party have kicked the Taiwan out of the WHO? This is so despicable, you have put politics first and disregard people's livelihood. So, uh secretary. For you to choose to be politically correct or you see as a public health issue. But all the place around the world. They should be allowed to join this global important forum like who? So that we can work together to combat the virus. Instead. I'll try to save yourself to ensure your political, to save your jobs, to be fully correct in order to uh climb further up. Well. Should this chamber protect? Officials like you? Or do we need to side with the public interest? Secretary. As a human being. Well, uh WHO is a key public health body, shouldn't it should include. Uh different regions as members and. So that everyone can also get the latest information, don't you agree? Secretary. The viewpoint raised by Doctor Cheng. He once again, he have framed the the matter as just a matter asking question. In my statement I made, RTHK. As the news gathering unit, there are also a. Authority and accountability, I don't want the Doctor Cheng to extrapolate it to anyone. But anyone in my seat as a government department. As a possibly responsible RTHK, that if any breaches I had a position, I had to do to point out. This the last member of the day, Doctor Kiki Kwok. Mister you. Do you really want the CE job so bad? Well, RTHK is the second most trusted media in Hong Kong with um also the second most viewed. And Article twenty seven of the basic law to protect the freedom of speech. When do we have political appointed official? You know that uh. Reporters is rather a junior employee at RTHK. You're holding such high office and blasting the reporter by asking a question. He issued this highlight with threat, if you ask this question, that will be violating one China policy. By asking a simple question. But after when you reconsider Taiwan's membership. What is really uh the WHO official having a problem? That she only look at policies when take a little public health such as Taiwan wouldn't stand a chance, especially the Beijing have putting so much pressure. He could have said so, or he could have said something like, oh, Taiwan actually done a good job, the WHO should reconsider its membership. But it's the WHO who should take this political question. If you're not allowed a reporter to ask questions, may ask secretary. Does that mean you want to uh issue this uh little red book like uh Chairman Mao? Let's say you outlined the taboo areas. And of and have the prescribed list of question allowed. Do you want things to get distressed? Hong Kong people are enjoying very limited options. Hong Kong people already noticed that the red capitals had invaded all the media and television stations and radio stations. It's hard to find a media to speak for Hong Kong people. The credibility of RTHK is the highest amount of electronic media. We must defend this only remaining non-commercial broadcaster. Do you want to destroy yourself? You want to destroy this press freedom called a day or you waiting to do this while continue to progress outward? You really want to be the next CE? Secretary Yao, any response?
I hope that the honorable member. Would not. Uh divert attention using unrelated matters. I can say adamantly. That uh no other interest in the other official positions and please don't resort his tactic. To. Uh sway the government's position on this matter. I wanted to say for the fifth and the sixth time that the government's position is really based on the program as a whole. I may reiterate that we have respecting the freedom of news gathering and. And the press and RTHK as a public broadcaster and government departments also principles to be upheld. This bottom line is not crafted unilaterally, the whole charter. Must be abide as a whole. And I noticed the director of broadcasting, whether to to the policy board or. To their own staff had reiterated that will fully. Uh uphold the responsibility authority in the RTHK charter. That's the end of this segment and we shall uh start this special FC meeting tomorrow morning, thank you.